Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the February 2nd, 2015 Waukegan City Council Meeting. Please stand for the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance. Bishop Coburn.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you again for another City Council meeting. We thank you for all of your blessings. Pray tonight, Lord, you said in the script, "The time and the season for all things." This is a time we must look out for our senior citizens. Those that are aged, remember them in Jesus' name. Amen.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, I'd like to present to you the new Director of the Port Authority, Randy Rogers. Randy, would you please take the mic? Oh, I'm sorry, roll call.
Alderman Conken.
President.
Alderman Moiseo.
President.
Alderman Beedling.
President.
Alderman Nussem.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
President.
Alderman Velco.
President.
Alderman Rivera. Alderman Cunningham.
President.
Mayor and member of City Council, I am here on behalf of the Waukegan Port District. On October of 2013, our Executive Director and thus parted from each other. One year later and after performing a nationwide search for a General Manager, we received 22 resumes. Four candidates were granted interviews, and we selected one. The Waukegan Port District values relationship we have with the city. I'd like to introduce our new General Manager for the Waukegan Port District, Randy Roger.
Thank you. Thank you, George, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for inviting me and allowing me to speak just a few moments here at the City Council meeting. And thank you to the City Council for having me here this evening. I'm very excited to be the new General Manager of the Port District, and we're working on some really exciting new projects down at the port to bring more people down to the waterfront and see what we have available there. As far as the Marina goes, we're working on some improvements there, and we're working on bringing some businesses down to the waterfront that will encourage more people to come down and enjoy the lakefront. In addition to that, we are committed to bringing commercial shipping back to the port. I know it's been gone for a couple of years, but we're committed to doing that, and we're actually making some progress on making that happen. In addition to that, we're also continuing to work on the expansion of the runway at the Waukegan National Airport. This is a very large project, but we're working on those relationships and building on that so that we can bring that project to fruition. I've met with the mayor a couple of times already since I started, and we're committed to working together on making these projects come to pass. In all three of those areas that I spoke of, I look forward to working with all of the City Council and trying to make these projects successful and being able to create the situation such that we can improve the economic vitality to the city of Waukegan and the region. So, thank you very much for your time, and I'm happy to try and answer any questions if it's appropriate at this time.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you very much.
Well, there's several things I'd like to mention over mayor's comments. First of all, I'd really like to thank Tom Haggerty and Pat Needham and the staff of the Waukegan Public Works for an outstanding job during this snowfall. I was out with them Saturday night, and no one rested. They were busy from 4:00 a.m. till almost 6:00 p.m. that night, and I give them all kinds of kudos because those of you who came tonight and see how nice the roads are will appreciate their efforts last night. Second thing I'd like to mention to you is that SCOOP will take effect and will be done for the second year in a row, July 10th and 11th downtown. Jerry Cook and Lou Moore hopefully will partner and have an opportunity to make it better than it was last year. Those of you who went last year, I'm sure you enjoyed it immensely. I certainly did. So, just know that July 10th and 11th, we'll have SCOOP the Loop. During my campaign, we promised several things. One of the things that we did promise was that we would work diligently on the infrastructure. Tonight, I'm going to announce that we're going to bond $31 million for road repair and infrastructure improvements. The map that you see in the front, everything that's in red will be bonded and done this summer. I think we're going to -- what happened, here's how -- I met with the Alderman last week, and we discussed bonding, the opportunities to bond, to make this occur, make this happen. As you know, we raised a sales tax 0.25 percent. We're starting taking effect January 1st this year. We project a $2.5 million annual sales tax revenue to come from those use that will be geo-bonds. The first pledge will be on home rule sales tax. Second pledge will be on property tax. $31 and 1/2 million worth of bonds over a three-year period. The first year of the bond will be the least amount. We look at maybe 6.5% to 7%. 6.5% to 7 million dollars first year. If that works and the bonding capacity fits, we will issue bonds the next year in the amount of $12 million. There again, if that works and we can meet our expenditures, the third year, we'll spend another $12 million. Tom Haggerty has money in his fund to do the infrastructure, the water and sewer repairs underneath the streets, so that'll be working too. There will be several, three separate bond issues. Home rule sales tax, if there's any leftover, after debt service is paid, will remain in the capital improvement fund for future infrastructure improvements. The timeline for this, after meeting with Tina Smigelski, Tom Haggerty, and Greg Moiseo, the timeline is followed. We're going to interview underwriters in February. We're going to approve bond ordinances and create official statement in March. We'll market the first series of bonds in April and receive project funds in May. If everything goes according to Hoyle, May, we will start this project, and we'll work all summer on these roads. We're looking at 23 miles of roadway, and 40% of the city's roads will be done during this project. So, it's a great project. Alderman Moiseo, would you like to speak on behalf of the project?
Yeah, sure. This is a long time in planning with Tom Haggerty and a lot of work by him and his staff in engineering. Just a little overview, Waukegan has 240 miles of road. David, is there PowerPoint? Is David still here? We had a PowerPoint, but I don't know if it's up and running.
No, it's not.
Okay, that's fine. Just to get an idea of that, that's from Waukegan to St. Louis, straight line. It's a lot of roads. I think as residents, sometimes we only think about the roads we drive on or the roads that we see. 240 miles of road is a lot to take care of and a lot to deal with. The average lifespan of arterial roads is 12 to 16 years. Residential is 16 to 20. Alley is about 25 years, and sidewalk's about 40 years, just to get a perspective of how long those things last. I think we all know the conditions of the road. Granville Avenue, you knock your teeth out when you go down it, as others too. This has to be done. It's not at a point where we can put it off any longer. We've tried to patch it. We've tried to get, you know, the potholes and this and that. It's just not going to work. You can only patch so long before it's beyond patchy. It has to be done. So, we know the conditions of the road. The annual anticipated, if we would have been putting $5 million back into our roads every year, that's what we need to do. We obviously got to a point with economic times, we couldn't do that. We couldn't put $5 million back in. Anybody who owns a home or owns anything, you've got to put money into it. If you fall behind, it starts to cost more money as you go. We just could not maintain that, about $5 million a year to maintain that much roadway, 240 miles of road. The mayor went over the financing of it, but this is 40% of the city's roads, 40. It's never been done before in the city of Waukegan, 40%. As the mayor said, the red is what will be done this summer, and then the blue the next two years in no particular order, depending on how things flush out with the finances. But this is a long time coming. You've heard up here, all of us have talked about how we need to get the roads taken care of, and we have a plan. You can see that we have a plan on what's going to be done and how it's going to be done and how it's going to be paid for, and that's important because everything in some way is tied to roads. Your property values are tied to roads, businesses are tied to roads, all of that are tied to roads. So, I think it's a very important project, and people understand that we are making an investment in Waukegan, $32.5 million over three years, and 40% of Waukegan's roads will be done. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. The last thing I'd like to mention is, if you look to your right, there's three renderings of College of Lake County. We've worked on this project for a long time with David Agacy and Jerry Weber, CLC. There was a point in our discussions, and David is right here, there was a point in our discussions when it was very adversarial, and we wanted to follow the master plan to the teeth. They had other ideas, and within the last two years, David, I'm very proud that we came to a resolution to our differences. We collectively agreed to disagree on what would be the best for both parties. That's the result of that, and I want you to know that that is a beautiful project. I'm looking forward to the completion of that project. I'll be going down to Springfield to meet with the governor on two separate issues, this being one, the casino being the other, but I'm very proud of our partnership with College of Lake County and Leggett Architecture. Please take a look at that. I think the thing that's going to impress you the most about it is the quality of the project, and second of all, the seventh floor is all glass, and it's going to be a great project. So, David, thank you so much. Ted, thank you. That being said, Jane Ferry, 531 Leith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Jane Ferry, 531 Leith Avenue, and Executive Director of Waukegan Main Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm wearing red today to point out that National Wear Red Day is this Friday, February 6th, and it is a reminder to women that heart disease sneaks up on us. One in three women will die of heart disease in their overall, and I want to thank State Representative Rita Mayfield for holding an event today in downtown Waukegan to kick it off. Other things that are going on, Mardi Gras is coming up. Waukegan Main Street's Mardi Gras is February 7th, starting at 6:00 p.m. It's food, it's fun, it's frivolity, and we have casino games. I understand the mayor has just agreed to be a dealer, celebrity dealer once again, so thank you so much for that, Mr. Mayor. Tickets are still available. Please feel free to call the office at 847-623-6650. Also going on in downtown, Mr. Benny is playing at Clockwise Theater. Mr. Benny is their best-selling show, and it has only been open since Thursday, so please go to see it. It runs through February 15th, Thursdays through Sundays. The Complete History of America: Abridged is going to be at Three Brothers Theater. It is opening this week. It is centuries of history in 90 minutes, so how can you possibly pass that up? It will be Fridays and Saturdays through February 21st. And the Genesee Theater has a number of things that are coming up. Spank, the Fifty Shades parody, is on February 12th. Imagine Ocean is the 13th and 14th, and Black Violin is February 20th, so please check out their full calendar if you would. Chinese New Year is coming up, and it will be celebrated once again at Fong's Kitchen on February 19th from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. There will be a buffet and fun featuring the Year of the Goat, so please come down and enjoy that. There are a number of special events, but there are also weekly events that go on in downtown Waukegan. Greentown Tavern has trivia night on Wednesdays, every Wednesday. They have open mic night with Cypress and Young every Thursday. And Seventeen North has hamburger happy hour Tuesdays and Thursdays from 4:00 to 7:00, and karaoke every Friday. If you are looking for events in downtown Waukegan, please check out our website, waukeganmainstreet.org/events. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Calvin Mathis.
You know, I come down to the City Council quite often, not as often as I should. By the way, 528 Leith Avenue, Calvin Mathis. And I appreciate the City Council, the hard work that you do. Appreciate the diversity of the City Council, but the reason I'm speaking today is just a news article I read in the News-Sun on the 30th that shows you how far behind I am about getting up here, but it was somewhat, it caught my attention. It really spoke to diversity. I tried to get the other side of the story as far as the lawsuit toward the city, that's what caught my attention, and this is like the second year that we're facing, that's a city facing a lawsuit. Now, I don't know how the lawsuit would turn out because, as Alderman Velco reminded me, there's two sides to every story, and I appreciate that, Mr. Velco, because you're right. That's what I always say, you know, be fair, let the other side hit the story. But, that being said, I would hope that we hit the other side of the story and it doesn't get settled, and we have some...
So, which lawsuit is this?
This is a lawsuit, a discrimination lawsuit with the city clerk. I'm not the city, the deputy clerk. And so, you know, like I said, I'm not going to speak to that because the newspaper article, I'm going to let that be because, like I say, we've got to hit the other side of the story. But, there was another article just as good, and Alderman Cunningham, he was the head of that article, and he's sponsoring a forum to discuss community policing and how we relate to the police, especially with the things that's going on in the world today. And so, I just appreciate Alderman Cunningham getting that together for this coming weekend, and I have planned to attend because the reason why it sparks my interest is I believe in diversity. I believe in, you know, different points of view because we have to have different points of view, and I appreciate the City Council because we have somewhat of a diverse council, but it could be a little bit better. I wish Mr. Rivera was here because I know he's retiring and going to kind of lose a good voice, and I know he does good work in the community because I've seen him out in the community dealing with children and everything, so, and I know he's retiring, and I told him he's done a good job, which I think all of you do a good job. You do the best you can, and I can appreciate your hard work coming out. And I normally have three minutes, and I always try and be respectful of that, and what I wanted to say, it would take more than three minutes when it concerns diversity and different perspectives, so I come down here all the time, so I said, "Well, since I'm going to be here, I'm going to use my three minutes the next time." So, just give me a thought of what I'm going to talk about the next time I come. I probably won't be here, well, the next time I come. And I just, I've been trying to encourage other citizens to come out and support you guys because you guys work hard, and you need more support than you need.
Yes, sir, that's your three minutes. Thank you. Thank you so much. Chris Blanks.
I'm just coming today as a reminder that this is the second day of the month which is set aside and which we pay tribute to black history. And with that being said, oftentimes, I like to pluck a little history from my own family tree, and if I can share this with you. This is from the National Association for the Advancement of Color People, the NAACP as it is known, Office of the General Counsel, Julian Barnes, President, dated October the 4th, 2005. Dear Mr. Blanks, I am pleased to inform you that we have located that your grandfather, Henderson Darby, fought and won against the state of Mississippi. Additionally, we located a passage from Jim Crow's Guide to the USA that mentions your grandfather and his involvement in the struggle for voting right. It goes on to say that in the early '50s, Reverend Darby had tried several times to register to vote, but he was denied several times his right to vote. He would not accept the statement, "You did not qualify," and filed a suit in the state of Mississippi from Jefferson Davis County, Prentice, Mississippi, the right to be able to register without having to interpret the Constitution of the state of Mississippi. He won that suit, and that gave Negroes the right to vote as all other citizens. I share that with you because it is a very important legacy, and it's something that I've shared here before, and I appreciate you allowing me to come before you to share that. And as the last speaker said, it is important that we have a sense of diversity throughout the city because it also is a reflection of the community. So, thank you for allowing me to share, and also for April the 3rd, we will be having a Black History Beyond February at the Puerto Rican Society. I'll be coming forth with more information. Thank you for your time and your attention.
Thank you. Jerry Cook.
Hi, I'm Jerry Cook, and...
Address.
My address? From my...
Just give us your address.
Pardon?
Your address.
1003 North Avenue, Waukegan, right next door to Louis'.
There you go.
Professional martial arts. You're welcome to come in there, Wayne.
David's there right now. I'm not beating up my own son.
The Lake County Ninja, we call him now. You want me to just SCOOP?
SCOOP, yes.
SCOOP. Well, last year, we had a, was the first year that we actually organized SCOOP, and it went off pretty well, Friday night and Saturday. Saturday, we got hit with a little weather that kind of threw us off track, but Friday night, we had 750 cars, and then Saturday night, we had about 250, almost 275. And so, we're working on SCOOP again this year. We're working to make it better. We're going to, we're addressing, David and I just had a meeting, our first meeting, so we're going to get our committee together, so we're addressing several things to make it better this coming year than last year. So, instead of having a, to focus on the car show, we're going to do more focus on SCOOP, and the car show will be a small part of it. We are reaching out, like last year, myself and my car club, we went to about, geez, every night, we were going to a cruise, and every weekend, we were going to a car show passing out flyers to get people down here. We had, we had clubs from Gages Lake, Antioch, Kenosha, Highwood. We had the GTO Club from Mount Prospect that came down, so we had a good representation, a lot of people coming in, and as you could see on Friday and Saturday night, the streets were packed, and the bands were great, so I don't have anything to do with the entertainment other than listen to David pick who we're going to have. But, I think this SCOOP, the key thing, is to get more cars down there, more people down there, and I think we had, we had close to, what, 15, 17,000 people in two days, so it was a good SCOOP. And we had no, we had no, we really didn't have any problems. We had one person that thought he was Bruce Lee, but that ended real quick, so we put him in his car and sent him home, but that was about it. I mean, it was a great time, and I'm looking forward to doing it again this summer, weekend after the 4th of July.
Thank you.
You bet.
Minutes, motion to approve the regular minutes of January 20th, 2015. Motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Cunningham. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Your Honor, real quick, I forgot one slide on that road thing. Engineering is also going to be done in-house, which saves about 10% on a project, so the first year, they'll save about $800,000 because we're going to do all the engineering in-house. I had one more slide, I'm sorry. I forgot it.
Okay, thank you. Next one, appointment of David Bonhauser to the Waukegan Library Board.
I'm looking to, Your Honor, there was some questions that come up, and I'd like to hold this matter over.
Okay. Held over by Alderman Cunningham.
Thank you, sir.
Committee reports judiciary. Alderman Velco, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Judiciary met this evening, and the first two items have to do with the College of Lake County. As you've mentioned to the audiences select, that they can see the views of what's coming on, and at this point in time, I'd like to ask David Agacy to come up here, who's affiliated with CLC, and there's a short presentation for the full council and the public. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is David Agacy. I'm the Vice President for Administration with the College of Lake County. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. The mayor spoke very truthfully. While I like to call it spirited discussions that we had for a number of years, eventually the staffs came together with competing master plan from the College of Lake County and a master plan for downtown to create something that I think is not only going to be a huge asset to the College of Lake County, but is going to be, we hope, a great addition to downtown Waukegan. As I said earlier at judiciary, a little over 30% of our students, of 9,000 full-time equivalent students, live within five miles of downtown Waukegan, but only 1% of our students come to this campus. There's a lot of reasons for that, but the primary reason we've learned through our research and looking at where other cities have done what we've done, it's because students aren't able to get a full degree here. Most of our offerings are, over 60% of our offerings are in adult education. When you, it is true, it is a truism of higher education, when you build it, when they'll come. We don't currently have the facilities to be able to offer full degrees. With this project, we will be able to do that, so we do anticipate that this will become a more popular campus. It'll take a little time to build that enrollment, but the key to that is making this a full-service campus, and nowadays, it isn't like when I was in college that you went and did whatever a professor told you to do. There's a lot of things that students expect from learning resource centers, computer labs, to enrollment centers, to having access to financial aid counselors and regular counselors, and all of that is programmed to be part of this campus, which we aren't able to do today. As many of you know, this project has a very long history. It was first approved by the state of Illinois in 1993 to be a building on the Grayslake campus. In 2003, the Board of Trustees voted to move the $49 million project over to this campus, and they made a wise decision because the board at the time had seen that it was important that we have representation throughout the county. It was about that time as well that the college opened a campus at the Vernon Hills campus, at the Vernon Hills site. They took the focus of having a full-service campus, and it's been very successful from a credit perspective down there, and we fully anticipate that this is what's going to happen at this campus. As I said, we're all very excited about this. We've had a great relationship with the city and getting all of this pulled together, and Ted Hoag, who's here with Leggett Architects, is going to take it over from here, and he's going to give a brief presentation about the site, what we're going to have in the building, and we'll both be available for any questions that you have. Thank you.
So, all right, if I, if we're going to hear a meeting from over here with... You know, we're gonna hear a meeting from over here without the microphone?
Yep.
I'll take that if you have. Okay, as the mayor mentioned at the beginning, and as David stated also, at the beginning of this project, we met with the city and representatives of the college, zoning and planning department, Steve, Russ, and Mike, to talk about goals we wanted to achieve on this project. And as the mayor stated, it basically came down to following the city's master plan. And how that impacted the project, what it really means is how it shaped the project is, basically, the master plan calls for all our structures along Sheridan Road. And obviously, there's only so much program that this project has, so as a result of going up, the footprint shrank, which is very important. Also, it was very important to the city for the location of the project, which I'll get into in a little bit. And also, just like any good urban design in any city, is to create what we call street activation, which means connection between the buildings that are along the urban edge and the street itself. And then opening it up with a lot of glass area, not only in the new buildings, but as I'll talk about in a second, with some of the existing buildings that are currently on the campus. And then there are a couple of things that the college really wanted to do, which also, obviously, will help the downtown area. One is, as I'll show you in a second, the project is kind of centered around Madison Street. And, you know, if you've ever gone down Madison Street at that area of town, it needs a lot of help, quite frankly, and to make it more of a pedestrian zone, and also to improve the circulation around there, both pedestrian circulation and auto circulation. And then last but not least is, the college over the years has taken on a variety of buildings downtown, renovated them for their use. Aesthetically, they don't really come together as a campus. They're still individual entities. And one of the goals we want to do with the new addition of this very prominent building is to improve the other buildings so that it feels like a campus and gives it a real sense of place. So, that was something that was very important. What you see on the screen right here is the... Basically, the site of the Alton Lake County Campus. This is 33 North Genesee, affectionately known as the Old Globe Building. To the north is 111 North Genesee. And then the college has also taken on with a sliver of a building on 31 North Genesee. There's also three buildings right here, North of Madison. Aesthetically, they're kind of nice, but unfortunately, we looked at them, and structurally, they've got some real problems, and the floor levels don't align, so functionally, they become very difficult to deal with. So, unfortunately, we're gonna have to demolish them for placing a part of the proposed addition at that location. And then, obviously, there's Madison Street running right down the middle of the whole thing, which is gonna become kind of the centerpiece of the whole development. To the south is the existing city park structure along Sheridan Road, which the college is currently negotiating with the city on to take over, to meet the parking requirements of the new addition and the existing buildings. And as part of our discussions is, the city had a great interest in developing the building at this location right here for a number of reasons. And quite frankly, programmatically and functionally, it works very well for what the city wants to do, I mean, the college wants to do. When they take over this parking structure, it creates great connectivity directly into the new addition. The plan is then to bridge over the alley at this location, which we need to keep open and connect it to the old building, which then in turn with the overpass right here connects to 111. So, once you get into the parking structure, you get direct access to pretty much all the facilities on campus. Again, this is kind of the site aerial of the campus. This is kind of the way it is right now, and you can see what I'm talking about, 111 North Genesee. It's pretty closed off from the street, doesn't do what I was talking about in terms of street activation. The aesthetics of that building, you know, do not match with anything else that's going on in campus. The old building does a pretty nice job aesthetically in terms of creating a nice image of what the campus could be. So, we kind of looked at that as our model, of how we wanted to develop not only the facade on 111 North Genesee, but as a model for the proposed addition to the east of this building. The other thing we really didn't like at all was this overpass. Obviously, it fulfills a functional need with the tinted glass, the heavy look of it really, you know, visually creates a barrier to the view of the lake. So, we wanted to do something with that, not only to open it up a little bit more and make it more inviting, but use it more as a gateway to kind of the Madison Street area and campus itself. This is the proposed revisions that we are talking about. As you can see, 111 North Genesee, we opened that up with a lot of glazing to get that street activation. Programmatically, inside the building, we've also arranged some of the functions so that it complements street activation. Currently on the corner right here, that's kind of an internal function, a chemistry lab, so we're gonna move that out of that area and make this corner area street-armed. So, it really relates to the street. We're then gonna provide seating area out on Madison Street, which just becomes almost like a pedestrian mall area and kind of reach you into the mall area at the center of the campus, so that hopefully some of that activity from the inside will spill out. Above is the Dean's area now, again, glazing to the outside. And then, as you can see, we've kind of dressed up the bridge, taking off the tinted glass, putting up clear glass that was very transparent, and like I said, you could see through it, and created kind of a gateway image across the whole thing that, again, invites you into the campus and gives you a sense of place and entering into the campus realm. You kind of get an aerial and you get a sense of the way things play out. It was also very important to us to kind of look at the hardscape. Waukegan's done a nice job of renovating, like, the hardscape, the sidewalks, the tree plantings, the light poles. In the past, you were upgrading that, so we wanted to bring some of that into the site and kind of form a tapestry around the internal activities along Madison Street. So, we lined Madison Street with some of those amenities. Looking straight from the north, you can see this is the main addition right here in the six stories along Sheridan Road. We try to develop a similar rhythm to what's going on with the old building, making similar materials and similar colors and textures. We are planning on using an architectural precast, which basically looks like a Indiana limestone to give it a very rich feel, lots of glass, especially toward the east with the views of the lake. In terms of programs, starting at the Sheridan Road site, as you can see, from Genesee down to Sheridan, it basically drops 10 feet, so we pick up a floor. At the lowest level, we have a testing center on the main level with an entry toward the west end of the building. The student services above that is the LRC, the library. On the east end of the library, it explodes to a two-story space, so again, spectacular views up to the lake above that. We have adult education above that. We have sciences. And then on top, on the top floor, something that the mayor was talking about is three classrooms that are visible, what, holding partitions? With the opportunity to open that up into one great space, we call it the community room, that can be opened and renting, or different activities that the community might have. And then there's rooftop terrace around that entire community room, community room, has glass southeast and west. So, it's pretty much a 360 view of the area, and you can imagine the type of views you can get from that high up, great views of Chicago. And this gives you kind of a view of Sheridan Road, it gives you a feeling of the terrace above, it also kind of gives you a view of what's happening down here on the hardscape. We're maintaining the drive into Madison Street with turnaround much nicer, and we have some temporary parking along the east side there. We're placing the children's learning center on one-story addition where those three buildings are that we demolished between 111 North Genesee and the learning center. We're providing an outdoor player area, secure and safe for the children, and now they actually get a southern exposure and some sunlight, unlike what they have right now. They're completely in the shade for 80% of the year. And this gives you another view. We have a broad overhang on the top of the building, sort of a functional and aesthetic purpose. One, functionally, it shields the building from the south sun and the early east sun, but also it becomes kind of a signature element, especially for instance, when you're getting off the train at the lower elevation along the hamstons, looking up on that, it'll be a very, you know, uplift, dynamic image. Also, as you come down Sheridan Road, it's kind of a signature element on the building. And then, as I mentioned, the college is negotiating purchasing the garage, so they made a commitment to upraise the garage, just in terms of general maintenance, it needs some improvements in terms of security. But also aesthetically, we would like to, with the money we're allowed, to tie in with the overall campus aesthetic, maybe placing some precast panels along Sheridan Road to really beautify it and kind of shield the actual parking garage aspect of it, to make it relate more to the overall campus. And then here, this is kind of the overall site plan. You can see the turnaround at this location, temporary parking, the idea of bringing that hardscape that's along Genesee and Sheridan Road all into the site, and then kind of creating a small entry plaza on Genesee that kind of designates the main entry into the campus, defined by the gateway, which is currently the bridge. Now, open up any questions you might have?
Is the parking garage gonna have to be expanded? No.
No, it needs the zoning requirements right now for our parking. Current use and future use for the addition.
First, I'd like to say to thank Russ. I think this worked out a lot better. It's... We're not taking up a whole city block on the east side that could potentially be valuable property. I'm very pleased with the way this plan ended up. I have a chicken and egg question. It seemed like there was a amount of... Dollar amount of money that was already predetermined before the project was even designed, in light of what's going on at College of DuPage. I wonder why the state does things like that? Okay, here's... Am I right or wrong about that? I mean, here's $49 million. Okay, now, design something. I think... I think the need needs to come first, and then a design within parameters, being a public building and a taxpaying public can only afford so much. I'm just curious how that works.
We would have submitted... I've been at the college five years ago. We would have submitted this project 25 years ago, and we would have said what we wanted, and we would have posted it out. Every year, the state adds on a construction and inflation amount, so it probably was considerably less back in 1993. But that's how it starts. So, that was the egg, I think, or the chicken, one of the two. But that's how it got started, and that's how we end up with the dollar amount that we have. One of the hard things is, you can't predict how a college or its environment is gonna change, the cities that it serves over a 25-year period. And so, it has been tweaked a little bit about what might be... It wasn't originally called an adult ed and lifelong learning building, but we realized over a number of years now that it needed to be a full-service campus, not just focused on a couple of things.
We could have still had a building. Let's say it was only $35 million or $38 million, right? Or we would have designed the building to... That would have used up that portion of money, correct?
If they had understood that in 1993, it would have probably...
Well, I just... I have somewhat of a construction background myself, and I sort of know how things work. And it seems like you get a design, and what people want, and then you design it, and once you have a design, then you can figure out what it costs. Seems like the money was there first, and then, okay, we have to design something for $49 million. I'm not criticizing the project, I'm merely pointing out things, because I read a lot, and, like I said, in light of what's going on at College of DuPage, that's horrible. Ed Holborn there, and the largest passed out taxpayer money. Nobody's minding the store except for one lonely commissioner on there.
That's why I love working for the College of Lake County.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know during the committee, you talked about starting the project 2016. Do you know how long the project will take to complete?
It's scheduled, the opening is for the spring of 2017. That is, I'm sorry, the spring of 2019.
I was gonna say, but we're not having to. I'm having a heart attack there.
The reason why we worked with staff to try to seek your consideration for approval tonight is, the first phase of design is due to the state on February 15th. It'll take another eight months to get through design development, and then right after that, we'll head into development of construction documents. We expect bidding in the spring of 2016. It takes a long time to award through the state, at least four months, even after contractors have submitted. So, we hope to be breaking ground in late 2016 and then opening in 2019.
I hate those maintenance intensive papers that we made in the state in our downtown sidewalks. You know what? I don't have a problem with matching what's existing on Genesee Street, but I would like to see just concrete sidewalks, concrete in the plazas there, so we don't have these maintenance issues, or the college won't have the maintenance issues. I think it's a safety issue as well. We already made a mistake. We've seen how that has worked out. I think our Public Works Director will vouch for that. I'd just soon pull all that crap out and pour solid concrete downtown. Nothing more beautiful than that. If you could make that change, I would appreciate that as a taxpayer.
Will work out then. How's that?
Thank you kindly. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Dan. How's that, sir? Thank you, guys. Item A, the Judiciary Committee recommends, and I so moved, that the adopt an ordinance, that we adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2440. Petitioner is the College of Lake County. Text amendment to section 8.5-4, conditional uses, allowing colleges and universities as a conditional use permit for a public college.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item B. The Judiciary Committee recommends, and I so moved, that we adopt an ordinance approving zoning calendar 2441. Petitioner, College of Lake County, located at 122, 126, 128 West Madison and 34 North Sheridan. Conditional use permit for a public college. That's it.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, madam clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beadley.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Thank you. Items C and D, Your Honor, we have this evening with us Rob Chandler, who is also the architect and a petitioner, excuse me, part of the petition to come in for Panda Express and Waukegan Road. Mr. Chandler? Thanks, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Mr. Chandler, I'm gonna have to break their drum. It's gonna be... Where is he? Oh. Okay. Hold on. Is that... Oh, my goodness, it takes a second. Oh. Sorry. It's okay.[1691.32] We are the architects of Panda Express. I want to give a little brief history of Panda. Panda was started by Andrew Churn. He came over from China in nineteen seventy-three with his master chef father, established the first Panda. It was actually Panda Inn and a refined dining restaurant. Andrew strived to bring this experience that he had with his father and his fine dining to a quicker pace into more people. With that, in nineteen eighty-three, he established the first Panda Express, which is a quick-service restaurant. Still continuing to strive for more. In nineteen ninety-seven, he added a drive-through, was the first drive-through for Panda Express, which is one of the items that we are presenting tonight for Panda. Panda's gone through somewhat of a brand transformation right now. They're trying to bring a little bit more interesting, more modern feel to their restaurants than what they had in the past. They still keep some of their traditional items like Panda and their brand color, red, to kind of hold together to what they had started. Today, Panda actually operates over seventeen hundred locations in forty-six states. Panda also cares. In nineteen ninety-nine, Andrew started Panda Cares, which gives back to the community. And to this day, they give over twenty-eight million to schools, charities, and nonprofit organizations. The site that we are looking at is nine six zero South Waukegan Road. It is proposed to be a two thousand six hundred and ninety-eight square foot restaurant facility. It does have a drive-through and it actually has a little outdoor patio door. Site's a little bit narrow, so in a sense, we had to get creative with the drive-through circulation. As you can see, you'll come in really from the back and you'll drive all the way actually to the front and back around to be built in for the drive-through of two, another ten cars. To help hide or screen vacuum, we work with staff and we have come up with the landscape plan that you see, there's trees, but more importantly, the landscaping, the ledge, Waukegan Road, that again will screen the cars from the road anyways. The exterior of the building is a mix between aluminum composite panels and exterior insulation system, having a ZEFS. There are a few accents of exterior tile that you can see right here and here. There are some actual bamboo stocks that are painted green and it's to bring in a new brand transformation for Panda as well as make it a little bit more aesthetically pleasing and interesting. The architecture does go around four sides. As you can see, up on the top, up here, that is actually clear glass step back and the image of Panda Restaurant on the corners, if we go back to the first slides. This is an actual building that has been constructed already. Again, you can see the dock, you can see that's a little more interesting, just putting up, you know, the simple story building. Once again, it does go all the way around and if you look down to the bottom over here across the right, that is where the patio is. Again, they keep it their brand image, which is that, the red irons, the dimensions and the patio chairs, vehicles that are up there. That was a quick overview and presentation of what we're proposing and we thank you for your time. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yeah, just want, where is this? This is, is it at the north side of the south entrance to Fountain Square?
Yes.
Okay. I saw the plan, I just wasn't sure where exactly it was located. It's near the south entrance.
Alderman, it's next to Chipotle, it's not at the south end.
Well, it's farther closer to Chipotle's? Okay, thank you.
Towards the north end.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Rob, it hasn't come up, but it came up in committee. I'm sure somebody's interested. When are we breaking ground?
There, obviously, again, they'd like to break ground as quick as they can, but it is slated for April eighth since getting approvals and obviously, what are they, off the ground?
Yep. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, item C, the committee recommends adopting an ordinance approving zoning calendar twenty-four forty-two. The petitioner is Panda Express, located at nine six zero South Waukegan Road. The site plan approval for Panda Express per the Western Gateway Redevelopment Overlay District and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item E, committee recommends adopting an ordinance amending chapter six of the city code concerning non-structural demolition. This is to tighten up these current ordinance that we have, Your Honor, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item D, committee recommends the adoption of an ordinance approving zoning calendar twenty-four forty-three. Petitioner is Panda Express, located at nine six zero South Waukegan Road. Conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through per the Western Gateway Redevelopment Overlay District and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item E, committee recommends adopting an ordinance amending chapter six of the city code concerning non-structural demolition. This is to tighten up these current ordinance that we have, Your Honor, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item D, committee recommends the adoption of an ordinance approving zoning calendar twenty-four forty-three. Petitioner is Panda Express, located at nine six zero South Waukegan Road. Conditional use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through per the Western Gateway Redevelopment Overlay District and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item E, committee recommends adopting an ordinance amending chapter six of the city code concerning non-structural demolition. This is to tighten up these current ordinance that we have, Your Honor, and ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Before we go further, I have one item I'd like to make people aware of. Chief Farrell got a letter of recommendation, a letter of thank you from the Ferry family. Just wanted to let everyone know that on January third, there was an incident involving both of their parents. Had issues, both of them had issues and ended up on the floor and our paramedics and firefighters not only took care of them, but transported them, secured their facility and then were actually, the family was touched that they were concerned at the hospital. So I'd like to send out a thank you to Lieutenant Eric Lyons, firefighters Lauralee Thomas, David Freeman, Rene Diaz, and Michael Kavanaugh for assisting a ferry. That's from the Lawrence and Mary Ferry family. They really appreciate our staff and Chief Farrell. They sent some especially thankful to you and for keeping everybody so well trained to make these things possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman. There is no old business reports in communication, there is none new business. Item A, approval payroll dated January ninth, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-two cents and final payout in the amount of two hundred and ninety-five dollars and eight cents and payroll dated January twenty-third, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of one million, three hundred and ninety thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and eight cents and holiday payout in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars and ninety-one cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item B, approval of bills dated February second, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of nine hundred and seventy thousand, thirty-eight thousand, ninety-six cents. Motion by Alderman Valco, second by Alderman Newsom. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I have a question, please.
Go ahead, Alderman Beedling.
There's a check number four five six zero seven three to Waukegan Main Street, Mardi Gras Masquerade Nine. I'm curious why the city's paying for that?
It's, we've done it every year I can remember. It's a matter of supporting the Main Street cause and I thought that it was very appropriate to do so. And it's in my line item budget in the mayor's office.
I mean, did you not get your fifteen hundred dollar expense allotment for January?
Sir, that's, it's had nothing to do with my money. It's a line item in the mayor's budget to help free the cost of Main Street. It's a very good organization. I bought a ticket on behalf, I bought a table on behalf of the city of Waukegan.
I appreciate that you sent the email inviting the Alderman, but you pointed out, you said, "I purchased a table" and you didn't really purchase the table.
The city purchased.
City funds are paying for it.
The city purchased the table. It's been done as long as I can remember.
I would prefer that you write a check out of your expense account for that. I think that would be the ethical thing to do. Would you please? This has gone on for too long with this. I mean, we all get expense accounts up there and that's what we're supposed to use them for. Could we pull this one out of the bill, Ron? Can I get a second on that?
If there's a secondary motion to pull this out, is there a second on Alderman Beedling's motion to remove the donation to Main Street in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars? Is there a second to that motion? Ties for the lack of a second. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Item C, approval of raffle sale application for Waukegan area, USBC, WBA. Motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman May. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Alderman's time, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Conken.
Thank you. Wow, where do we start today? I'd like to reiterate the mayor's thanks to the city yards and the guys that work there. I got calls at five-thirty this morning because they needed streets plowed so that people could get to work. I called up city yards and there was somebody there to answer the phone, so I really appreciate that. I know you guys keep an eye on the weather. I know that you knew it was coming and I know that you guys were prepared for it. I'm glad to have you had people, glad to see you had people mobilized for it. Unfortunately, there's a couple of design flaws, I would call, in the area where I had where the calls came from and that was, that's the fact that the city plows down the middle of the street and unfortunately, the parking, cars are parked right on the edges of the street, so that means for them to unblock their cars, they have to shovel the snow back into the street, then cars get stuck. I'm thankful that the city yards then followed up with that and they got some snow removal equipment down there. It's just one bad area. I apologize for it, you know, but it's just a design flaw in the way the streets are set up, but that is one area that is very difficult to plow for our guys, but they do a wonderful job and I appreciate your efforts. As long as we're here with the snow, let's remind everybody, please be careful with all of this snow. There's not all sidewalks and everything else may not be shoveled, so you might find kids walking the streets, especially at the beginning of the school day and at the end. So I'd like to remind everybody to be especially cautious and that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Moiseo.
Just to echo it, thanks to Public Works for keeping the streets clean. I woke up this morning and most of the streets that I was able to get to were pretty clean and obviously people, you know, that people can get to work and that's important. That's it.
Alderman Beedling.
I would also like to thank Public Works for a job well done. There were two streets that were a problem because people didn't move their car off the street and park them in their long driveway, specifically on Cornelia and Hamilton. Plow couldn't get down the street, so Public Works had to send the low boy semi-tractor out to Lakers to pick up a front-end loader to plow the streets. This is unfortunate. I was grateful for the robo-call that the city put out with the warning, please move your cars off the street. I saw snow routes where the signs say, "Two inches of snow, no parking," tow zone. I think we need to start towing cars in our snow routes, start getting serious. Fulton, mess, bunch of cars, but there's a bunch of cars parked in that street every night anyway. I wonder where all the people live. Seems like there might be some overcrowding over there. Not sure. The Main Street thing, we vote every year to contribute. The city generously contributes. This year it was twenty-five thousand dollars and I believe there was a little debate on the issue at the time that maybe we couldn't afford the full twenty-five thousand and maybe only twenty thousand this time. Well, we ended up donating the twenty-five thousand, but now it's twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty. I think it's important that any expenses that we incur come out of our expense account money that automatically goes in our check once a month. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom.
Yes.
Alderman Tempest.
Yes, I have a few things to say, I guess. Number one, the storm was quite a storm we had. I thought Public Works, again, I'll say, did an excellent job in fighting the storm and you do fight them. But again, as some others said, cars on the street, this is crazy. Park their car in the street, they gotta realize it's gonna snow and they leave it there. Maybe on the correct side, but they ought to be off the street. It just, in my block, all the cars were off the street. What a beautiful, easy job they had coming down the street, but when you get a parked car there, it just, it just disrupts the whole plowing situation. Somehow, we need to get those cars off the street when there's a storm and be part of our city ordinance. After two inches of snow, you will have your car off the street. And I think we have to get tough, we really do. The other thing I was gonna talk about was our ability to, with code enforcement, enforcing our codes. And I really believe that our city is much better off today than it was in the past with our code enforcement officers out there, working day and night, maintaining at least what we have and making this a better city to live in. And I think code enforcement, kudos to them because they're out there doing a good job and I really appreciate, especially when I have my word, I'm daily with them, trying to keep what we have and keep the lid on and teach people how to take care of their property and what's expected in the city. And I wanted to speak a little bit too about people attacking the mayor. I went through what I thought was the proper procedure. Someone's on the ballot, you have the proper procedure to go through to challenge the signatures that you think in your mind are wrong. To attack the mayor by another Alderman here in regards to that, to attack me, it's just Aldermen don't do that. Aldermen shouldn't do that. You know, take care of your own area, don't disrespect another Alderman. It's not the way things should be. And I really was, really held back the other night. I could not believe that another Alderman would attack me on this council. But I'm a Christian, so I'll turn the cheek, but I hope it don't happen again. Thank you.
Alderman May.
Thank you. And I guess I'm gonna respond to Alderman Tempest right off because I have to imagine that's me.
that's me. And I apologize if you felt personally attacked, or the mayor, but I do believe I, I spoke in respect to the process, not to the person. So I apologize if either of you felt personally attacked by any of my comments or the Electoral Board, but I repeat it over and over that I respect Chuck Smith, I respect the mayor, and I respect you, Alderman Tempest. I just felt that the process is in need of reform. So, my apologies. Secondly, I want to take a moment to express my sincere gratitude to the officers of the former neighborhood policing unit. Over the past four years, you have made an incredible mark on this city and have opened up communications with our residents like we haven't seen in years. The most prominent program facilitated by the neighborhood police was a Neighborhood Watch program, and I hope that the block captains in this city will keep this program alive. I trust that the Waukegan Police Department will do its best to support your efforts, and on behalf of the city, I want to thank you for your leadership in the community. To grow from approximately 20 groups to more than 50 groups is a testament to the success of Neighborhood Watch and to the dedicated officers under the direction of Commander Florip, Lieutenant Kelly, and Sergeant Mandrell. I must give special thanks to Officer Laney Newman, who was well-respected among the Seventh Ward residents, who came to know her not only through Neighborhood Watch, but simply through her professional service and commitment to our neighborhoods. I understand that the mayor must address financial issues and make difficult decisions while striving to balance our budget. And while we may disagree on the prescribed solution, I must respect his course of action as it is in his power to make such decisions. I would also like to thank Chief Wallace for reaching out to me during this difficult transition and for educating me on some of the intricate nuances of staffing and scheduling in the police department. His job is difficult at best, and I have confidence that the overtime issues will be addressed and managed to the best of his ability as we move forward. So thank you, Chief. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Valco.
Thank you. Those of you here this evening have seen presented this evening three separate projects. The first one being the CLC building that's been in the works for years for $50 million. The second one that you saw was the Panda Express building that's going up at the old Lakehurst. The third project you saw was, I believe, $31.5 million for the roadwork for the next two years, the first phase that's coming to fruition, I hope, fruition, turision, fruition?
Fruition.
After we float this, the $8 million, $7.5 million bond. I'm very proud of what this council's done. I'm very proud of the leadership of the mayor. And those of you know, I'm not kissing any butt, I'm just telling you that I'm very, very proud of this council. Those of you that have waited for the last three or four or five or six or seven years saying, "When are we gonna get things started?" It's coming. It's starting right now. It's coming. The new college out west at the old Lakehurst, the roads which are very important, it's coming. Please stay with us. Come along for the ride. That's all I have, sir.
Alderman Cunningham.
I, too, would like to compliment our Public Works team, Mr. Haggerty, Mr. Needham, and the entire staff out at Public Works. They have been working in long hours trying to stay ahead of our, of this major storm. I need to echo, I think, some of the, some of the words of my colleagues on the council floor regarding these, these, not only just parked cars, there were a lot of vehicles that were just left. They just walked away from their cars because they got stuck and probably very frustrated. And it's, it is unfortunate, but I think, Your Honor, between our chief of police and our director of public works, we're gonna have to be able to give Tom or his, one of his supervisors some authority on when to remove some of these vehicles. Now, for those who don't understand the importance of not having these cars on the street, two inches of snow was one deal. When you're dealing with 16, 17, 18 inches of snow, it is important that we take that and push that snow as, as close as we can to those curbs. If that doesn't happen, God forbid if it gets below freezing, it's not gonna happen. And that means our trucks are messed up, and that means we have to go out and buy new equipment. Let's take care of it up front. I think it, it is time to really get aggressive on some of these vehicles that have not been moved that would last two or three days. It is, I mean, it's unacceptable, or have not communicated to our communications department, the non-emergency number of the city of Waukegan, let them know what's going on. It is just too important to the operation of snow removal. So I hope this goes out in the newspaper with, with Dan Moran and makes sure that we're looking to get tough on, on this issue, I hope, Your Honor. I really believe it is time that we do this, particularly when you're dealing with this magnitude of snow. I'm going to comment about the comments that were made toward the Electoral Board, but I'm gonna first say that I asked the senior Alderman, should I say anything? And the words to him, to, from him to me was that it is best to leave it alone. This just happened two minutes prior to us starting council meeting. And I was, maybe like him, I was a little miffed, somewhat disappointed, because I did, I did feel like it was a personal attack, not on myself, now city clerk Maria LaCorre, and our city mayor, Wayne Motley. And it was a personal attack because it came from one of us. When I say one of us, one of the leadership staff from legislative body. And what people might not know, when we say something from a mayor to, from an Alderman to a city clerk to a city treasurer, people listen. And to say that maybe the process needs to be changed, and this should be changed, and I don't know the total process, which is fine, you know, that's, that's your, it's your decision. And, and I do appreciate Alderman May, and it takes a leader to apologize. It takes a leader to say there was an error in my end. So I do accept your, your apology, not toward me, but to the comments that were made, fulfilled was geared toward us. But this has been weighing on me for the last couple of weeks. And I am a vic, I won't say victim, I was a person when I first ran for Alderman. I filled out the petitions, and you won't believe what got me removed from that ticket. Now, all of us who have done petitions before, you had your name, your, your first name, your last name, your middle, your address, your telephone number, the, the year, the term of the year, and then the office. I put down there the word "Ward" as opposed to Alderman. I put "Ward." Then on that board was Alderman Tempest, I think, Mayor Durkin, Sam Filippo, if I'm not mistaken. And I was upset, angry, that this small little thing could get a person removed from the voting process. But not once did I ever say they were in cahoots. I shouldn't say that, because I don't think that's what was said, but it was, that was the perception that was given. It was perception that we were trying to in favor Larry Tempest. And let's be clear, Larry's my friend, as a mentor on this council, not just to me, but I think to everybody up here. Person not who have known me more than I've known him. But as an individual who understands, and Mr., Mr. Blank said it earlier today about his grandfather, that the voting in this, in our community, particularly in Waukegan, the percentage of turnout is very low in our city. We don't need to try to deter anybody from doing anything, but to mention and to allow people to think that we are trying to sway an election, that is very serious allegations. Very serious allegations. And therefore, to come from one of us, I'm gonna put myself in there, it, it, it means, it means something to the people of this community. I felt victim by being thrown off the ballot. That's how I was termed, thrown off the ballot. But I say to Mr. Di and to any, anyone else who runs for these offices, it is a very difficult process, a very tedious process, but at the end of the day, it is a process that wasn't made up by us, wasn't given by us, only for us to process, for us to manage it the best way we know how. Looking at what was given to me, it was, it was asked specifically by then Chuck Smith, "Look at the signatures here, and look at the signatures, and make a determination." That was it! And I don't want to sound that I'm picking on, on, on a my fellow council person at all. I just want someone to understand that when we make comments as Aldermen, as leaders of this community, people listen, and sometimes they react the wrong way. And what really hurt me, any audience, part of those signatures, was a man who I went to school with his brothers. He was my trainer at Allstate. He trained and developed me, and he asked me, "Sam, how could you do this?" I had to tell him the same thing I'm telling you right now. This is all we had. But to, to try to explain to him our process because it came from one of us, that's difficult. That's very difficult. So I just would caution not only myself, but all of us before we make those comments and understand how our comments are viewed by others. I'm asking, and this includes Sam, and Bobby Evans told me this my freshman year as a, as my, my freshman year as an Alderman, get the facts. Don't you speak on council floor until you have the facts. And when you have the facts, then you go and you make your comments. But if you do that prior to that, you will get embarrassed out there on the council floor. It was once said that I was voting against something, and I heard an Alderman say, "I trust my department heads," that they would give me the information that is needed to make my decision. Well, we weren't department heads, but we were the Electoral Board. I'm asking you to do the same thing. Trust us for the information that was given. We make the best decision possible, not for Sam, not for the Ninth Ward, the Eighth Ward, but for the city of Waukegan. Those are my comments. I don't expect for anyone to maybe agree with me, but I do expect for you to respect what I'm saying, as I respect what you may say of your decision you have on this floor. Thank you.
And I'd like to address Alderman Valco's, some of the concerns he had and addressed. I can say to, to you clearly, when my team worked with me to get elected, we made a commitment to this community. We have fulfilled every obligation that I made to you, to this community. We collectively have done everything I set out to do. The final piece to this puzzle was the $31 million infrastructure piece that is gonna happen. I didn't do this by myself. It wasn't a Wayne Motley project. It was a dream that I had, and I just happened to select the right dreamers to come with me. They're here, in my department heads and in these Aldermen. And I can tell you this, we will at times have difficulties. We will at times have differences of opinion, and we will, on occasion, differ. But I can say with all honesty, these Aldermen are dedicated and committed to this community. They allowed me to lead them to the path we've chosen to take. I couldn't have selected better people to be the department heads, and I can say that the people on this council will get through everything we've been through in the past several weeks. We'll be fine. We'll get back together again. We'll make this work. And that being said, motion adjourned by Alderman May, seconded by Alderman Moiseo.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.